Thank you so much, Laurie. You've saved me a lot of grief on the patches.
We pray now.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Laurie, just like hop online if you can hear us.
That's okay. Thank you.
So as you know, the wall got built and then we contracted with one of the library staff who on her own time built a mural, painted a mural that paid homage to Herman Melville. And there were two estimates that came in for the ramp. And our original proposal had one and then Paul, before he left, got a second estimate from who are they? They, you know, they are there.
Northeastern Mobility?
Yeah, Northeastern Mobility, who came in with a lower estimate and that was the one that was accepted. So the ramp was installed on August 1st and August 2nd. And on August 2nd, we had to provide a progress report to the foundation. The main thrust of which was to talk about the impact that the wall and the ramp had on the functioning of the library because they were real interested in the library reopening. That was their, that was their interest. And so we could talk about the impact that the wall had because it allowed, the library was closed from December, whatever, 30, the end of December to August 1st. And so it reopened, Lansingburg reopened on August, on, not August 1st, on April 1st. So why are you frowning? It's all, it's all those eight months. And so the library reopened on April 1st. And so we could talk about the, the status. We could talk about the impact, particularly that the wall had on the functioning of the library. Because it allowed it to open. That was the, that was really the biggest impact that it had. We couldn't talk about the impact that the ramp had because it had just been constructed the day before. And so, and the progress report reflected that. The the, we haven't paid the contractor, Northeast, although they have submitted an invoice because we want to, and this gets to what I need from you guys at the end. We need to know that the ramp met the specifications, both of the estimate and that it is in fact ADA compliant. And so I believe that codes has to get involved in that. So the there is money remaining from, if in fact, the estimate for the ramp turns out to be what their proposal, the cost of the ramp turns out to be what the actual cost was, then there will be about $27 million left over from the $20,000. And so I've talked with the director of the foundation and that how this money would be spent. And I proposed that the money be spent on improving the experience of patrons. But they are, they are interested in things that are sustainable. So tentatively, she said that was fine, but we don't know how much money is actually going to be left over right now. So that, are there any questions about the ramp?
No, I'm surprised that there's not much left there with the ramp and the wall.
Wall only costs like 1,500 bucks.
And, and the painting of the wall cost, you know, the wall itself cost, you know, $2,150. That's the construction of the wall and the painting of the wall.
And the ramp?
The ramp, the estimate was $15,068. In contrast to the first estimate, which was like $19,000.
So I'm going to ask this question about the ramp and perhaps the acting director can comment on that. I know we've reached out to asked that we reach out to the install and confirm that they put a writing that they believe that what the installation needs ADA. Have we heard that from them?
No, so they've reached out to the city to have code come and look. And at this point, we haven't heard anything. So today we reached out to the contractor to see if code might have come by.
My impression that it does not need ADA. My impression. I think it's pretty clear that there are some concerns. And I don't want them to delegate that off to somebody else that it does or does not. Their ADA experts, they should take responsibility to certify when it's done or just say it doesn't.
It has to be that the codes people certify it, right?
No.
Who certifies that it's ADA compliant?
A lawyer who doesn't sue you. That's my understanding. There's, there's not the authority and jurisdiction to give a building permit could weigh in on it, but that doesn't mean you're immune from ADA.
What are your impression makes it lacking for customers?
It has an 18-inch full-size clearance from the door. And the door, the installation of a ramp has reduced the ADA clearance on the full side to about three inches or less.
Am I allowed to ask a question? One of the things that, that strikes me about it is that the door opens wrong. Is that part of what the clearance issue is?
The door opens, whatever, door opens.
No, I mean.
The door's been there all along.
No, 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 no. My point is with the ramps there, the door opens from it blocks, it, it makes it difficult. When you come up the ramp, the door opens this way. You're coming up the ramp here, the door opens this way. If the door opened this way, you could turn, you could.
That, that might have been easier, yes. I'm not sure why they did the way that they did, but yeah, there are ways to work around that. They could have, there are several things they could have done. There's some things they still can do. So I just want them to certify that.
Yeah, so.
If ADA or if it doesn't, I want them to modify it so it doesn't need ADA.
Yeah.
That's always been the primary goal.
The goal absolutely was that, absolutely was that. And, and so yeah. And that is why I haven't paid the invoice.
I would recommend that you hold on with it until they come out and fix it or that they.
Or it's certified.
Or they put themselves on the hook that it doesn't need ADA. My impression is that it does not.
May I clarify a point?
Laurie?
Yes, may I clarify a point?
Yes, please.
Okay, I spoke to the contractor. He is under the impression that they are within ADA compliance. He does want it. He was the one that called code enforcement specifically because they want them to come out and verify that. But he was also told by code enforcement that no, they would not receive any word if it is in compliance. They will only be contacted if it is not in compliance.
Well, I'd like, Laurie, if you're here, if code enforcement comes out, I'd like to hear them weigh in on the relationship between the handrail of the ramp that's been newly installed and the door.
Certainly.
The clearance that existed before was greater than what's there now.
Certainly, yes. And, and I agree completely. I just wanted to clarify what the contractor had stated.
Okay, thank you.
And the layout that is installed does not match their drawing that they provided before you started the installation. The layout on the drawing shows a equal clearance on both sides of the doors as installed. The clearance on the pull side on the straight side of the door is much, 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 much smaller than the clearance on the hinge side of the door.
It's very helpful.
Yeah. Laurie, is it possible code could come without you knowing?
Of course. Yes, it is entirely possible.
We may need to reach out to code just to see if they've been here, even if they don't give us, you know, the, the letter that they send out, just to know that they have been here. That will give us more of the information of whether or not specifically it's compliant. And if not, how long will it take for them to send us a letter that it's not in compliance? So that takes a little while too.
So we reached out to the vendor to reach out to code to make sure that we can certainly follow up if we need to.
That would be good.
But, but that has happened already. They were supposed to. So aren't you suggesting that maybe besides the vendor reaching out to codes, that the library reach out to codes?
I find out, yes, had to go visit. If they did, that gives us information. If they did, how long does it take to write a letter in case you found something? And I think they've been very, they're very reasonable and accommodating over there. Contrary to things that you hear about letting you know what they're thinking and how they're doing things. So I think it'd be advisable to know. Otherwise, we're still working in a vague area, not knowing.
We had just asked them to reach out today because we hadn't heard. So we can certainly, yeah. So give it a couple of days. We can certainly call, say by Friday on our own and then see what the status is if the vendor hasn't heard or gotten back.
That would be good. It's always good to have verification.
Absolutely, yes. But I think to Kirsten's point that he's looking for the vendor to write the letter, not necessarily code, or does it really matter?
Right. But it's.
If we get sued, we can't sue the city code official. We can sue the company that installs the device that allegedly is code compliant.
Right.
Or ADA compliant.
Right. Going to code just gives us more information, you know, finding out, it just gives us information and we're not dealing with, again, vagaries.
Want a certification from, I would, I strongly recommend that the library protect it though, for getting a certification.
So the two things that's.
And friends too, of course. Friends leave out in the middle of that.
Okay, so I'm going to wait. Yeah. And as you all know, the Friends had responsibility for the 2024 library appeal. This is the second year that we have been responsible for the library's appeal. And this year, we the library was offered through us a $10,000 challenge if we could match the $10,000 in the appeal. And so you all probably should have received a, this letter. And I thank those of you who in fact donated. About 200 people donated. And we were able, the good news is, we made the match. And we have notified the anonymous donor just recently that we have made the match and and was able to cover our expenses because it so that I, I'm just going to tell you quickly a little bit about, I don't want to take up a lot of this time, but what the process was around this appeal. So there was the letter that went out to people who had been previous donors, people who had voted in the last two elections and and friends of the Troy Public Library. Then also, working through the outreach committee, Upper Hudson then sent out an email to patrons with an abbreviated version of the letter. That, and we tracked what happened in, in terms of each of these modalities, you know. So the Upper Hudson was, had very little impact on anything. And I think because it went into lots of people's SPAMs folder. It, you know, it has the initials of the person who sent it and we're very grateful that they did it from Upper Hudson with the Upper Hudson tag at the end. So you wouldn't recognize it, you know, if it came to your email box, you wouldn't necessarily recognize it. And I know it came to my SPAM folder, so. Anyway, and then we also did some social media through Instagram and, and Facebook. And then the last effort was another email, this time from the Friends of the Troy Public Library to the people we have emailed for. And that, that was another bump up. The, the, the second email that went out. But the most successful was the letter and then the email. And then people people send checks or they then contributed through PayPal. And so we have, there's the expense then of PayPal. So we are sitting on approximately $23,000, which is intended for the reconstruction of Lansingburg. And so plus we will have more money to do the things that we normally do, like pay for the museum passes, to pay for other programs that we do. Some are reading, adult reading, staff appreciation kinds of activities. We will have money from the appeal to do, to do some of that, plus all the other stuff we do, you know, in terms of pop-up book sales. And and the bookseller, which is hardly any source of income. So what we need from the board is, as an organization, is we really need to know what the board's plan is vis a vis the reconstruction of, of Lansingburg. And that includes things like the status of, of the insurance debt, the, the other grants that you all have, are applying for and what might be the, the timelines of those kinds of things. Because I, I feel like we are I don't know what the right word is. We, we are representing the interests of 200 people who donated the money with the, the notice that it's going to you know, at least $10,000 was, at least $20,000 was going to go to the reconstruction of land of this place. And so we want to be true to those donors. And so you know, we usually, so what the ask is that we, that you keep us apprised of what those what those efforts are, what's going to happen with the insurance debt, what's going to have, what grants are applied for, what other, you know, sources of money might there be that would shore up the money that we have? You know, I know that the money that we have is, in the scheme of things, is a drop in the bucket. I mean, it's like, you know, nothing compared to what the costs are going to be. But on the other hand, you know, we represent not only taxpayers, but, but donors. And and to that extent, we can be, the other way we can be an asset is, in fact, in support of other kinds of, you know, funding requests and stuff like that. So what do you all think about this ask?
Quite reasonable.
And as part of the agenda, some of these things are going to get covered too.
And I think the minutes of the building committee meeting are available when they're available. So.
But I don't know how to access them. I don't, that, oh. Yeah, I've never accessed it, any of the, I mean, you know, that would be great, but I don't, you know, so you don't have to do it now, but you know, you have to teach me how to do all this kind of stuff. You know, because it's like, you know, when you do the consent agenda and so much of it is, you know, already you know, like there.
And the packet's online too. Everything that we have now goes online. But we'll make sure that, especially after it's, especially after they've been approved, that, that's easy enough. And we have staff that can show you how to do it all too, even if I can.
So, and I don't know whether it makes sense, this time I got on the agenda because I asked to be on the agenda. Because, you know, it hasn't worked to be part of public comment because there's no feedback, there's no conver, there's no exchange that happens when you do that. And, and I don't, it may be that from, you know, that we might not always have something to report. And, but I, I think that in fact, you know, since we you know, we keep trucking along, I don't know whether it makes sense to be, you know, a standing part of the regular agenda or not.
I think we can discuss that. I think usually if, if you, whenever you've let me know that you want to be on the agenda, you've gone on the agenda, you're representing it. It seems to work that way so far. And now knowing that you don't always get some of the information, it's not that difficult to send you some of the after effects or just do a report to you that you can give to the rest of the Friends too. But I think that we can.
And, and I think also when we're talking about the, I mean, and you, you all can decide, but the people who are most, that, just like you, the people who most need this information, not the, not the, I'm not talking about the donors right now, but the board of the Friends, you know, so that it isn't only me. You know?
Which is why we attend your board meetings.
Yeah, and we don't always have them regularly, but right, we should have them more regularly, right?
We can give you little reports as long, as we go along. And certainly I know we're going to be discussing some of these very things that you asked about.
Yeah.
So that will be helpful.
Yeah.
I would like to speak to your side.
It's just a drop in the bucket. Yeah, one, just imagine if you weren't here at the POMC three to get the the money from the savings bank. No, we might not have, we might not get that 20.
Yeah.
Right. The other thing is that what we have collected and collect in the future, it's very helpful in terms of a match. Because most grants want you to have a match. And that enables us to do so if we have that money that you love. So a lot of of the money that has been collected for Lancingburg will be helpful with the match to the library construction grant. That has, I think we've received it. Thinking about that problem for anything.
We received the grant every year.
Right, for Lancingburg?
No, it's no, the deadline for submission is October 1st, so we won't get approval until next year.
And the Upper Hudson Board hasn't done approve, won't approve it until September.
Didn't we have have uh oh, I'm thinking Bayshack.
Yeah, sorry.
Um but so it enables us and often we're not fully funded, even though we may need more money than the match would ordinarily cost. So that's very helpful.
And it's nearly drop in the bucket is if you look at the total amount, that's still a a nice percentage of what is needed in the long run.
So the other grant that you applied for, besides the construction grant, which I know is that you will write it in the fall and it won't be awarded. And haven't you applied for another grant?
Uh we applied for a federal one that was.
Not not this, not for Lancingburg.
Not for Lancingburg.
Suggest that we work this on the share out the um bill of need notes.
Okay.
For that and if they give us the main refresh.
Okay, so yeah, show me how to access that.
Would that help? They're not in the package?
They're in the package, except for a few months ago.
We will get to the information, help you get the information that's been shared out.
I just want to ask this question, can I ask the question? What about the the, were you uh asking for money from um?
That's for HFR.
That's for HFR. Okay, I thought it was for Lancingburg.
Pampa doesn't give here, the other person.
Probably Stefan because of they uh represented in front of everyone, have any context of the least upon it.
Happy Pampa there. It might be her as well.
We are willing to talk to anyone, happy if we get the money. Um but I'm sorry to.
You know, that's it, I'm done.
It's been a bit, so we have other.
No, 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 it's I'm done.
That could be rooted offensive.
No, 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 you know, you're not, but I I didn't expect to take as long as I did.
If there will be some material discussed in the board meeting, that might be helpful to you because of the bad construction threats.
Okay.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, so we can get to other things. The interim, our next thing is the interim library director appointment letter. So in your package and sent out is a slight revision, I do not know to this day what happened to that E in R. Because in the original, s- some people got um a copy of it where the second word is A R and the second word is A R E. Originally it is A R E, it was a rechange. Um however, I did have a staff member go through the sent message and it disappeared on the way. I still don't know, they don't know how it happened, but it did happen. Um also um Carolyn had suggested that maybe say six months from the time of appointment might be confusing. So um I didn't get feedback back, but I, the words has elapsed, has been added. But those are the other changes. And hopefully everyone's had a chance to read this. So I'm making a motion that the board approve the letter of appointment to Christine and Jabo.
Session.
Thank you, um discussion. Discussion then um for approval, all the favor?
I I.
Well, congratulations.
Thanks for whatever you're doing in the evening. The interim of interims.
So next is our 2025 budget.
2024? Oh, when is 2025? Okay, it's the 24 came up at the.
I know, we're just so excited about the.
Oh, no, it is the 25. I've done so many budgets in like a few days that I've lost track.
Okay, we have, but this is by the way, upper approval, start or not, start on the agenda, it is upper approval tonight.
So does anyone have any questions about where we are with the 2024 budget effective July 31st? Um Joy and I went through it for some questions that Marie had um in order to provide some context of why we might have been over 50%. Uh I mean, not over 50%, basically, we took anything that Marie had questions about or any um line items that were over 75%. So that way we could anticipate what might be the situation. Uh so for instance, we've talked about salary in the finance committee meeting. It turns out that not only did we have free pay periods in July, but we've also uh did a payout of Paul's um vacation time. So we are over 50%, not certainly in the 75% up, but we're at 60.16%. Um and so it explains why it's not um as close to 50% as we would like. Uh things like workers' compensation, we've paid the 23, 24, as well as 24, 25. Um so paid for those dates, so therefore we're at 150.93% uh things like that. So I just didn't know if anything uh has jumped out to you guys, any questions you might have with any of those items, any concerns, obviously. Uh if you look at the overall budget, we're at 57.88%. So you know, only 8% over of the halfway mark, so we're still okay. But that has to do with the fact that we have a couple of line items that are at zero, like the building contingency, security services, uh young adults has, they have purchased books um for that. But under the way that the budget is versus Peachtree, Peachtree is that uh it's all lumped together under the main juvenile. So ultimately uh um we're looking at either separating out the two line items in Peachtree or consolidating um those I those amounts uh for the budget. But uh my mother, the uh I would prefer to have it laid out uh in case that we ever develop more of a young adult program separated from children and expand in that direction. It's good to track what we're doing for teens, uh being sort of a new component of libraries having young adult services, which is really about, you know, 10, 15 years old. It's not that, um it's still fairly new in the library world, so.
And remember, at the last meeting, we had talked about the fact that our bylaws said that we should review the budget, well, the current year's budget. And I believe July, and we thought that with Christian just starting, that that was too soon, which is why it seemed presented with the C.
Kristen, you have a question? Maybe I missed further something, maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry to go to 24, I'm, my apologies. I apologize.
Um we don't have to prove this.
Sorry, Kristen, what did you maybe misunderstand?
You were talking about the 22, 4 budget.
Yes, I made a mistake, I should be doing the 25, so um I can go back.
No, let's finish this one.
Are you sure?
We're headed down that road, but stay out of it.
Sorry, I'm, I've hit that wall of new jobness and I'm not always speaking and thinking clearly right now, so. Uh the other thing is if this format is a workable format for you guys, we can present it at every meeting, especially as I interim and um we're close, you know, maybe uh looking at salary and some other items. There are some items that we are already over budget for and other items might get us slightly over budget that um it's probably a good idea, you guys not knowing me so well, um just to be able to see where we're going. So that way we can mitigate any kind of issues that may come up for the end of the year. Calendar year, so December 31st.
So yeah, but $10,000 under the building.
Intended.
It's not spent yet.
No. In my mind, I've allocated it, but it's not spent.
It's been allocated to several different projects. But we could only pick one.
Exactly.
And there are.
There's a lot of room with budget, like repairs.
Mm-hmm.
Building repairs, I believe.
Right, and that has to do a lot with the Lancingburg and the cleanup and all of that.
And we also have, what I've been told is the they modeled up the the bricks that are bulging from the downtown library that didn't clean in. $14,000 for that. And so I think there are ways to use it.
Okay, absolutely, there are ways to use it.
The other area that I had concern about was the IT support, which we were pretty much at the budget amount for the year.
Right. So ultimately, we did pay some from uh 23 invoice in 24. But uh and then there were several different things that came up. I know I put on new camera setup and all that, but because of Lancingburg's closing, uh equipment had to be set up for them, you know, and all sorts of things. So there were some extra things that came up for uh Sean that he uh needed to do to get everyone up to speed and rolling smoothly, so.
Is Sean itemizing his bills?
He does itemizes those, yes. And every single department head looks at it uh to make sure that everything is in line, so.
Any of the, any of those costs related to the bird?
Yes.
We need to split them out and add them to what we're personally with the insurance company.
Okay, so we can certainly have them do that.
Is your staff satisfied with the IT services that we have?
Uh that's an interesting question on the spot. Um there are some things that are satisfactory and then there are some things that that seem problematic. So uh ultimately uh for, you know, I've been, I've instructed them as interim, I'm not here to make changes or anything like that. But one of the things that I have done is I informed him that we would be contacting him when he can come into, because the uh pay differential is different, whether doing something from home and and remoting in and doing something at the library. So uh so we're doing that. Um the other thing is that I've spoken with uh Ruth Smith, who's on our staff for the reference uh to see about doing things like helping set up for the um board meeting, because there's no reason to have, you know, pay someone 25 or $45 an hour to set up for that. So uh come to learn that we can update the equipment, we can get everything set up and all that. So there'll be some things like that that will be taken off of Sean's plate, so that way he can really just handle the big IT things, what have you, so. Thank you.
And before you on the board, um there was some looking for other sources of IT help and it was found that they were substantially, so. I don't remember, maybe three years ago. But the the amounts that I'm seeing as far as charges on these bills that he submits are pretty inexpensive. We have to keep in mind that the search that was made for someone else was very limited. Um I think there was really only one other concern that was spoken to, but we was that's when it was quite large, but so the project has been much broader than what we're using now. So it was not a true comparison. So I think now um if I may, Christine is doing some looking. Shelby doing some investigating.
I appreciate that, Christine, and thank you.
Who was the company? This is yeah, individual. It was fine, but again, it was a much bigger, they they suggested a much broader aspect to it wasn't just what Sean does, which made it more expensive. But I don't think he um any place else was really brought in to do an estimate. But now it's time.
So we'll be continuing to monitor to make sure that we don't overextend on IT. But obviously, it's a necessary component of running any library. And um there have been, like I said, many things that we have brought Sean in to get support for. So of course, it was expected that we would go over budget. Um now we're, you know, tracking.
So do you need to transfer money from a different line? Cover that?
Um I'm not sure how you guys have done that in the past. Um and if that's what you are comfortable with, then we can certainly do that and implement that. It would just be a question of figuring out where um, you know, what line item to the next line item.
Well, that is, say it out here, that implies that we've all had a say in that, you know, often it was the former.
Oh, I see.
Made those decisions.
Yes, I mean, shift thoughts. There are some people who don't bother as long as the uh total budget doesn't go over budget. Um and then there are some people that move everything around so that no line item goes over budget. And so I can certainly talk with Joy and then we can certainly have a proposal ready for the next meeting, especially the finance committee meeting, because that seems the most appropriate place for that.
And as a group, we we want to see this continued.
Was it helpful in any way?
Do you want to see it on a monthly basis or quarterly basis?
Quarterly, it's fine.
Okay.
Or for, you know, your um report to the next.
Right, right, okay.
Obviously, if there's something that comes up.
Yeah, I would probably do it monthly and then if there's something that presents itself, I will, I will do that.
Of course, just wanted, just wanted to say that.
Yeah, no, actually, thank you.
Plus we get all these still, all the other paperwork too, so we'll get.
Yeah, essentially, you're getting the data, it's just being put into a different view that's a little bit maybe cleaner set up.
Accessible.
Accessible.
And now for approval, so we do the 2025 budget.
Let us do the 25, thank you, everyone. So I've made, before we do the tax levy component at the top, um I made an adjustment to salaries. Um when I did an analysis uh the other day, it turns out that there were two people that had not had their salaries changed from this year's budget to the 25 budget. So I had to um not only figure that out, but figure out exactly how to negotiate that. So um with any change to the salaries uh comes the FICA as well. So they're both at 20.2% increase. Um retirement, as we mentioned in the finance committee meeting, um was uh $90,000. And then the quote for the estimates come in at $57,230. Um at one point, uh Marie had asked that we deduct 5,000 from the retirement. So I went ahead and did that, not knowing if there was more that wanted, that anyone wanted to happen. So I put it in at 85,000 instead of 90,000. But obviously, we've got basically $32,230 um that were now over, that I'm not sure if you want me to just make that adjustment under the retirement line item or consider um beefing up any other.
We got a lot of experience with the retirement.
Okay.
Did check with um UHLS and they said that what they get is pretty accurate. I wonder whether their their staffing is more stable than ours is. I'm reluctant to reduce it by too much. I think, you know, hey, if we reduce it by 5,000 and it turns out that we shouldn't have, that's pretty easy to absorb, but if we reduce it by 30,000.
Okay. Okay. You finished, but.
Then that wouldn't be easy to absorb. And there are some people that feel because of the way that. It's. A sum. Which is based on how much the stock market can fund. That. We should kind of cushion it from year to year. I don't know. We haven't had a lot of experience with it. Last year was the first that we had.
And we didn't get the full bill. We didn't get the.
I would be conservative. I would be conservative.
My thought would be. If you've got the estimate, be at least ten percent above the estimate. With our budget. The other part of that is. If we can come to somewhere, I really would like to make that prepayment.
Yeah, it's only, it saves us four hundred dollars and it's a fairly large amount of money and sixty thousand dollars. It's got to come from somewhere. Or. About two and a half months. I don't know. We, I, we would have to look when it gets closer, whether we have sufficient funds to.
Okay, so salary question, exclusive on the director. What, what percentage did we go up this year?
I'm not sure.
What are you talking about?
For the average person, what, what was their percentage of raise? They didn't get the twenty percent raise.
They didn't get a twenty percent raise.
So what, what did they get?
They got somewhere between nine and ten. And the thing is, is that you guys increased the salary for the director by twenty thousand. So.
And they won't get a raise. Until the year, so. And that is still pretty negotiated with, you know, the candidate.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, we authorized higher salaries, but we were not dispersed.
For.
Well, this is for twenty twenty-five, so it would be as of January. It is not retroactive. It's not now.
So we will. They would authorize in the past. Issue in the past. Is that correct?
That's true.
All the costs, all raises that need to authorize the payments.
Yes.
First.
Are being dispersed now because there, what is the salary schedule is now.
Effective when?
From January first to December thirty first. So the budget we had last year.
Okay.
Was.
You say, I mean, you said it probably discredited. That's what they had not been dispersed, but I thought I would say so.
No, what I was saying initially was that there were two individuals whose salary rate had not been increased in the twenty-five budget.
On the twenty-five.
So they, yeah, so they, so I had to make an adjustment to the original budget you received in June. Because they would have not had a salary increase and everyone else would have.
Definitely.
Yeah, that would be that.
The other part. The other part to remember, folks, is not only is there a, across a percentage based on the survey, what we've chosen. As people have been here longer, they've made another step. And that changes what, what the individual employees get.
So in point of fact, there are some people that are at a higher step now and they're going down two steps in terms of the way all did the budget. I don't know what or how or whatever.
Well, oh my fucking god.
So.
That doesn't sound.
It doesn't, it doesn't sound right. But the reality is then some people would be getting a ten thousand dollar pay increase and some would only be getting a five or six. So all, all I could do was take one individual that I know was corrected from twenty-two to twenty-five. Figure out where they were and based on the salary rate that was in the sheet that Paul had created. Realized that they went down two steps, put that in and then made the adjustments for the other two similar. Because there was no, there's no formula, there's no. Anything that I could work with to, you know, if everybody was, you know. Nine point nine eight percent across the board, I would have been able to figure that out. But ultimately, you're moving from one step schedule from, which hasn't been changed since twenty-two, to. Developing a twenty-five schedule that's different. So. And, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Makes you sick.
So he was actually looking at the. You know, the survey that was conducted about, of course, regional survey, maybe he was looking at that and like, oh, well, we. Oh. No, I'm just trying to figure out what he might have been thinking. It's not a benefit, but you don't. Sorry.
So I, at least in terms of retirement, going back to Marie's point. We can do eighty-five thousand instead of ninety thousand. So that way we're just reducing the budget overall by five thousand. And then.
Actually, when I was proposing it, it would have gone us under fifteen percent increase in the tax levy.
But that's no longer the case.
Yeah, that was before those two salaries.
Now, well, you know, it's still keeping us. Less than it might have been, but the thing we've done, which is lower comping versus just regular and not low. Yeah.
I think the biggest thing that we sort of talked about, about like relaying this to the public about what a fifteen percent increase looks like or whatever. Just like in a numerical way, because I think.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to get that information. Usually we get it from the controller's office, however. Well, no control. Yeah, it's gonna be interesting, but supposedly according to the administration of the city, they have a staff. The staff's doing everything that the controller was doing. And Marie had offered to.
I've done it in the past, just out of curiosity, they had my results in the news. And sometimes I've come closer.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, we can just call Andy back.
It's an exercise, really, not taking, we appreciate it.
Yeah, just because I think it's more information being related in that way, it shows a lot easier for.
Oh, we will. We will. We, we, we need it. We need it for the, for the pieces that go out in the public to say, this is the actual numbers based on your average. You know, property value, right? And what is the property value now, right? It does make it more accessible and understandable to say it's a cost of a chuck apart. Or it's, it's not even a fancy coffee. It's.
I think coffees are like nine dollars.
I know. It's not even a fancy coffee. It's something you can get at a covered bar, at Stewart's. So because when you see the numbers, it's.
Yeah.
The difference between what you see, when you see fifteen point nine versus five dollars or three fifty. Amazing. So yes, we will be getting that for sure without a gap. Well, you want to go through the rest?
Just a couple of things. So under operating business administration, I highlighted. A decrease of fifty-five hundred to four thousand for miscellaneous admin. Turns out that we've been paying for Casella, which is our recycling under that. And recycling and garbage kind of go together. So I just moved the fifteen hundred dollars down to. City trash pickup. It says city trash, but I've just moved Casella there. So instead of having like six hundred and. Seventy-five dollars or whatever Paul had, I just increased it by fifteen hundred. So I just moved those two pieces. So I didn't change the amount in the budget. I'm just requesting that Joy put Casella's recycling in there. Because now we have recycling and garbage with the city, which is separate than recycling with Casella, which is really more about the books. Because most places will not recycle books and Casella will and picks them up. So that's the distinction between the two.
Up under revenue, special services, please.
Revenue, special services. Yes.
From thirty-one to forty-three. Why?
Because we get a lot of people using the CDTA and the fax machine a fair amount. And there was a significant increase that Paul probably felt that we should increase it by that amount.
It's, it's kind of a wash because. I think, let's say they, I don't. Sorry, I don't know what it is here, but if we put in forty-three thousand in revenues, it's going to be forty-two thousand in expenses for special services. And it's.
Yeah, if we go down to the. Twenty-four budget. So right now. We're at eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty that we brought in and we budgeted for thirty-one. So we're at fifty-eight point nine percent. And then special services. We budgeted for thirty thousand. I mean, sorry, that was income. The thirty-one thousand was income. We're at eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty. And then in terms of the expenses, we budgeted for thirty thousand and we're already at eighteen thousand two dollars. So we're at sixty percent. And here we are just over mid, so forty-three might be too much.
And at one point, we used to bring in incredible money.
Okay.
I think it was like ten thousand one.
Okay.
It's just a real huge amount.
Okay.
Before I cut it.
Okay. And the other.
It doesn't have much of an impact on the budget.
Yeah, I mean, it's money in, money out, give or take, but you know, yeah. Not until open session.
Well, actually.
Unless the board chair wants to.
And staff, we have a special. Many years ago, we decided that staff has the opportunity to speak up when we.
I just, we may be losing some from the fax service. Because we find ourselves often having to. Take people over to, to do scan and email through the fax system instead of using the fax machine itself. Because the fax machine. Gives people a lot of problems. So while it's the same company, at that point, the. It's going to an online service with that company and so none of the money is going to us.
Anything else you want to cover? In particular, a lot of country.
No, I mean, essentially, I haven't done any significant changes to the original budget. Just tweaking the salaries this time, additional tweaks that you had about, you know, in more in the salary range for the director. I did put in for the mid-range in terms of calculating the salary for the director. You know. Anyway. Anything else, the adjustments, and then just moving the. Like I said, moving to Casella. So everything else is pretty much what you've asked for iterations as we've followed through.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm curious about the job and programs. I'm all for it significantly. I just wanted to ask about why. I decided to jump from. At the very end, supplies twenty-five hundred, fifteen thousand, writers eight thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, I, I'm not exactly sure what Paul's thinking was that. It's been that all along, so I haven't made any changes. We do on average sixteen programs a month at May alone.
Yeah.
And stuff, and obviously, we get support from the friends, which is really great. But at the same time, there are, you know, we've got the take and make kits that we're doing now that, you know, started probably during COVID, I would imagine. And they're incredibly popular, so those are continuing. I know that at the, I think it might have been the June, possibly the May board meeting, Paul was talking about, you know. What great programming that we're doing and the influence of the programming. So, you know.
Happy to hear it.
Yeah, I, again, I don't have any working documents, so, you know, yeah.
And that's something that we supplement.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. It's okay, you go. I was gonna say, yes, the friends do. Help fund, but so does the arts center. They give us a great deal of money for many of the grants that we have here. And we've had other funding sources, like we've gotten the humanities. For the arts grants, so. There's some types of balancing. Sometimes it comes from the budget. Sometimes the budget is covered also by. By in, in grants, which is another item.
And I do have to say that in terms of all of this, last year was the first Fall Festival. Now we know that we're going to be doing it, so there might be some padding in there to make sure that it's still a success. In the event that, you know, the art grant isn't available to us for whatever reason, or, you know, something happens that we can continue some.
And we're over budget this year. For programs, for programs and supplies, preference is better for our goal. But we've always under budgeted. Unfortunately, we don't put enough material in preference.
So how, how the budget works is that, yes, we're over on that budget line. But if you go and look at, say, the friends income and stuff. It, that's why we market as grant funded, because even though we're over, there is funds to help support the overage in the budget. But you're not going to necessarily see that in the way that the report is presented.
Thank you.
Just, just, I think I understand this, but I just want to clarify. I'm just looking at the twenty-four budget. It's on the workers' compensation line, says we, one hundred fifty point nine three percent. The note says payment for this year, next year, next year in twenty twenty-five. So we're covered in terms of paying for workers' comp. Because I noticed there was a nineteen thousand to eighteen thousand dollar decrease in that line in the twenty-five budget.
Yes.
It seems that we have paid for at least six months of twenty twenty-five.
I, you know, I was under the impression that it was for all of twenty-three. Now all of twenty-four and now all of twenty-five. But now that you say that, why do we have it in the budget at all for twenty-five? So it could be that it is a six month. Because we've got eighteen thousand. So it's less than.
It's just over.
It's also in January.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, they, they showed it in this, so they show it up in this year, but so it was twenty twenty-three and also twenty twenty-two. Because Joy had asked that things be recalculated to see whether there would be any savings. And so this includes those payments and also the payment for this year.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And hopefully, that can be offset by how much isn't being used for retirement.
Right.
And in past year, we have found that the bills from. Workers' comp can be very erratic. They can make a decision on how much they're going to be charging us. And we had been surprised by the increase that made no sense, but they get to pick the numbers.
So we worry about a surprise increase come, oh, one January.
It could happen. It has happened. It could happen again. It might not. That's just something to be aware of.
Gotcha. So I guess my question is then why are we decreasing that line item?
Because we've already paid for some of twenty-five.
Could you just find out what that cadence is specifically? I'm assuming six months, but I would just like.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. Anticipate prepay for twenty-six if we had to prepay for twenty-five. Yep.
Right.
Any other questions? Issues? Okay, then I will put in motion on the table that we approve the twenty twenty-five, what we now see as a draft budget. As of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Where the second. Any discussion? Oh, in favor? Have a budget. You're on again. It's your.
So. A couple of things, just for clarity, under my report, I put UHLS. I really should have put Directors Association. So that way you guys realize that it comes from those meetings that I attend, that I do not go to upper Hudson board meetings or anything like that. That I do not go to Upper Hudson Board Meetings or anything like that, so um. Anyway, and because Upper Hudson will do a presentation to us of what things are happening. Um, I will attempt to focus more on things that are happening um on the director and or. Some other levels so that there isn't any crossover with what um Evelyn does.
So for that first thing, by the way, um, I will leave us a new business, just to keep you updated what's going on. For the board's perspective.
Right. One of the things that has come up, which I know is on the agenda for discussion and possibly a vote. Um, is that we do have a couple of spaces in the library. At present that need to get some kind of contamination assessment, um, so. It's on my list for this now, but do you want me to wait on all that till we get to it on the agenda?
I think we want to wait. The other aspects to that.
Okay, so um. Um, another concern that I had brought up was sort of the discrepancy between the library construction grant for the roofing. Uh, the fixing of the roof at Maine versus the lowest of the bids that we received. So there's under ninety eight thousand is what we submitted for and three hundred and twenty nine thousand was the lowest bid. Uh, TAP has reached out to the lowest bidder to see if we can get the price closer to. Um, what we had submitted for, because there's no other grant that we have that's going to um. Fill the gap between those two amounts. Now, the only thing that I learned from TAP is that the price of uh labor and materials has been going exponentially. So that reflects some of the discrepancy. Um, and it could be that what we had requested, the specifics at that time were different than the specifics in the bid. Um, proposal, so we're trying to figure out what kinds of um. You know, what what we need and then, you know, can we somehow meet somewhere closer? Because obviously we don't have um three hundred and twenty nine thousand, you know, we're not quite there. Even if we use the building contingency ten thousand, we're not, we're not quite getting there. So uh so they're looking into that. I know that one of the um items was that we have two levels essentially with the building. So the main roof and then where the elevator is in the flag room is a little lower. So there was something about having to build scaffolding a certain way so they could get to the lower parts and the higher part. Um, anyway, so if we're not doing, say, the lower part portions, which are fairly small, then um. Then does that change the scaffolding enough that it's uh cheaper? Like, can we get to cut, cost cutting there and things like that? So as far as I know, they haven't heard back, so I haven't heard back, but we're trying to kind of figure out what the. What we can do with what we have, understanding that the more that we wait, the more that the price is just going to keep going up, so.
Better come from person, some more familiar buildings. Um, has anyone done an assessment on if that lower roof? Can wait a year or two?
Uh, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, there's enough, there's.
I know we have six different roofs on Maine, so.
So we don't have many sections, so ultimately, I do know that there's water damage in the flag room, I just don't know if it's old or new. But you know, I don't have any sense of that and so we can certainly, um, you know, have that looked at. The photos that were in the portal for the um library construction grant had no lower lower portions. It was just, you know, east, northeast corner, southwest corner and all that stuff. So it could be that that wasn't part of the original and then yet in the bid that was a portion of. And maybe that's what's also throwing it off, you know, so we just have a little bit of tweaking to do. Uh, so I basically took the document in the portal and I gave it to TAP. So that they knew what we had requested before versus what the bid requests were, anyway. Yeah. So there's that portion, I don't know if there's any other thing we can talk about or. Go through, um. Not going to talk about HVAC, because we're just waiting on Chipo at this point. Uh, Gilded Age is done with, they did not damage the building in any way, shape or form, which is nice. Uh, they painted stuff, so it looks a little cleaner.
Wait, they turned into a gentleman's club?
Yeah, apparently in the show, we're the gentleman's club, so at least.
They used to for the second season, it's like a public meeting.
First season, there is a scene outside of the library, because he's coming out of the gentleman's club.
Right, so the outside of the building is the gentleman's, the inside is something.
Yes, then it was the meeting of the, I'm trying to remember, what's the women's group that.
Okay, I didn't know.
Further down, after some of the statistics, I updated the status of library construction grants. So going into twenty five, um, we increased the amount of the um grant to two thousand six hundred. Two hundred, I can't say, two hundred and sixty nine thousand four hundred and forty four dollars, still an estimate. But that's for the Troy roofing, um, the deadline for submissions, it's October second. I'm still waiting on one of the uh quotes from someone to post into the portal and there'll be an adjustment with that number. I just don't know what it's going to be at this time. Uh, in terms of the HVAC, which was the twenty four grant, it's still under review from D L D. So we haven't gotten any approval or anything at this point. Uh, and then we are still working at the Troy uh to complete the roof replacement, which was the twenty three grant. Uh, and as I mentioned, that's hundred ninety eight thousand and then we still have the Troy northwest corner restoration, which is the parapets. And we haven't received any final invoices, I'm pretty sure the work is done. So it'll just be a question of submitting a report and getting the after photos and all the other pieces and parts together. So those are the only four grants that are open right now with the library construction grant program and.
Thank you so much for organizing them like this.
Well, like when people were talking about different numbers, I'm like, I'm not seeing that, so it it was helpful for me to kind of.
And just as an addendum, even though um the HVAC support is reviews and process. Upper Hudson negotiated with D L D for the change in the first place. So there was an informal understanding that this would happen. And hopefully that means that they will approve it in their own time. But it wasn't as if it was a price, then they knew while we were making the changes and they then kept aware of mine by.
Okay. Uh, the next one is the ARPA grant, so uh as it stands, we've submitted all of the invoices that we have from Taylor Riley Wilson. So uh once the two invoices that we've just submitted yesterday are cleared and paid out. We're still at uh five hundred and forty nine thousand six hundred and seventy one dollars. Um, for continued work on the uh HVAC system. And then, of course, we have the downtown revitalization initiative. At this point, um, the master grant contract or the new master grant contract hasn't been um created. So we're working off of the original documents that we signed. So we can move forward with using the funds and everything, but my understanding is that any pre-work is going through ARPA. Um, I did hear some rumblings that people were saying that you you need to use up your ARPA funds by the end of the year. I don't know how true that might be, um, but we'll continue to, you know, keep it near to the ground and.
I think that's coming from federal legislation, I think that was the original deadline.
Oh, okay.
So I, yeah, I, yeah, I'm not sure if that will be extended or not, but that was the original. Then in the bill text.
Okay.
The American.
I see, I see, okay. Uh, we have a bit of change in staffing, um, we have hired a couple of substitutes to come in to work on Saturdays. Uh, for those of you who've been around for a while, you may remember Aaron Meyer and Will Ocasio. Um, yeah, they both have come back uh to work on Saturday, so we can move the librarian to Friday. Uh, because it's a longer day than Saturday right now and be able to um help get me off the desk on Friday. So that I can continue to do that, which I'm doing, um, juggling as it were. And um, and then we're planning on keeping them through the fall fest, because that's going to be almost an all hands on deck kind of day. And uh and then after that, we'll see with the hiring of the new director, do we still need them? Do we have the funds to be able to continue to have them? So they're very much aware that this is a temporary substitute component of the two people, they're not going to be working together. It's going to be rotating each weekend with, just to uh again, get a little bit of support uh for the reference department.
We need to vote to recognize that it.
I don't think so. If we want.
Yeah, we don't need to approve it, but we could acknowledge it to show our, to show your responsibility and knowing what staff is. Do you want to do the the motion, we're very good with that.
So make a motion that we acknowledge. The employment of Aaron Meyer and Willis and Ocasio. And as part-time substitute. Substitutes for library services.
All in approval.
There were no um high-level incidents uh this past month. Uh, we uh only had four one at uh Lansingburg and three at Troy. Um, only one of them of note is that we have a potential harassment uh situation that might be going, it's very subtle. Um, but it's very focused on one individual. So I have taken that gentleman into my office and spoken with them. Um, difficult to know if they understood or not, but we're going to continue to monitor it and make sure that everyone feels safe at the library.
Good, you and I can get together, I just want to hear more about the falls, happy here, but just.
Oh, okay, sure. You're welcome. Yes, I know, absolutely, um, suggestion box was open today, didn't have a chance to do, uh, put it in here. We had um someone requesting that when we close so much, can we uh do something? So that the holds um remain basically at the library, so that people can come pick them up. We had already um had a meeting about that prior to um talking, you know, getting the the suggestions. So we we basically, for those of you who don't know, that if we do close, we can do an extension, but only up to a certain point with the holds. Uh, and the other thing is, we are now, like, if we sense that the weather might be um hideous, you know, like too hot, it will be humid, whatever. Uh, we're sending out a pre-note saying we may be closing, please come in and grab your things or whatever. So we feel that that might have mitigated some of the miss, the confusion and things going, getting sent back and having to reorder and stuff. So we're trying to do the best thing that we can. And um, the other suggestion was um just basically about social media. Um, there's, it needs to be timing with each department to make sure that we get the social media app, that that we don't fall on top of each other. And then do too many things at once, so that maybe a program gets lost in the mix, especially with summer reading, because we have a fair amount of programs. So a lot of that is in place, but it could be that the communication might need to go out to people or a tweaking of that. So those were the two suggestions that we've had so far. I can talk about the programs, but I just wanted to highlight them and then I placed uh statistics um. In the packet, just so that you have an idea of information, I realize that this is a lot of information uh to look at. So I'm not uh sure if there's something specific that you are interested in. Um, to a point where I can do maybe more of a graphic for you of where we are with either circulation or. Um, you know, collection, you know, adding materials to our collection or where we are with, say, reference or young people services. But these are the reports that these separate departments have been doing every month and the reports that have been sent to Paul. That I know you weren't necessarily aware of. So um I I just didn't have the time to like create something, so I thought if you at least got this, you would have an idea of where things are. And then maybe there's something where you would rather, you know, um, have just specific things of, you know, whatever it might be, so.
Information.
Yes.
Yes, and thank you, thank you um for the staff for paying attention, who is attending our programs, I like seeing those numbers too. Like, that's excellent.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever got any numbers on those.
Yeah.
In my experience at least, so.
And you know, certainly when summer reading is done tomorrow, um, we'll be able to report out specifics of summer reading at the next meeting. Because we've had, say, over a hundred people, let's say, the big truck night, we've had, you know, sixty five, seventy, seventy five people coming to either the. Um, Wayomobile or. Yeah, it's pretty cool, so anyway, so it'll be some really interesting stats from that, that'll, that'll come. So that's essentially it for my report, other than going into the specifics about the two areas in the building that require our attention. Any questions for me, comments concerning?
All right. So we're up to old and new business. Where do you want to start off with the two financial pieces? The prepayment and um the treasury bills?
Okay, let's hear what the treasury does, because I think that's a surplus. The finance committee recommended the treasury bills of approximately one thousand hundred thousand dollars. That are coming to the, be renewed for six months. So I said, where is that?
Okay, any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
The second part was that we were notified by the retirement. Folks of how much our estimate of payment is going to be. For twenty twenty five, and that was fifty seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. If we pay by February first. Twenty twenty five and fifty six thousand eight hundred twenty one if we pay by December fifteenth. Twenty twenty four.
This is, this is not, this is not serious, but I don't know why. They even bother offering early payment, that's.
So that you pay.
It's just. I just assumed the four hundred dollars must be accounting expenses, there's nothing that has, that's, that's, it's such a small.
Also, don't forget their fiscal year ends for the end of March, so it gets processed.
Yeah.
And we have to think in terms, when we look at this, think in terms of when we will have money. We're not going to have more money February first than we do December fifteenth, because when the city sends its taxes out, bills out, when they pay us.
I, you know, we can try and project out. What we can expect. When we get closer.
You know, we have to make a decision today on that.
No, no, it's not due until December fifteenth, if we want to prepay.
And it's almost pays count at the same time, if we don't have enough money for anything else. So we can see where we were headed. November at least. We'll know we can do in December. It's a big chunk of the money. Any other comments or questions? So the ready table is for now. As an idea and keep an eye on it through the next month and see what we have and whether or not it's advisable to do it.
I would say more than the next month.
The next month, how months are here? Yes, by November, we want to declare what we're going to do in December, but months. Do we have any other, oh, new business?
Um, the issue of the. Of Paul's access. To library data.
No, I read, just to be clear, his email.
So he doesn't have access to.
He still does today, he will tomorrow till the close of business and he has agreed to this. And I think I send everyone the message, he has agreed and he says he can get everything done by close of business tomorrow. He has agreed and he says he can get everything done by close of business tomorrow. And as of Thursday morning, there, there's still some questions because other people, they come in and there's been some slightly rearrangement of the idea. I think the latest is he's getting his password to Christine. But if not, what happens on Thursday morning is Joy will change the password to Paul's account. And we'll share that with Christine. Christine, therefore, if she finds anything of a personal nature in Paul's email, will immediately, as it is, as the material was found, forwarded to Paul. And Paul has been up to the rate of with that.
So do we have any policy on on this?
There is an email policy. It was thirty days.
Is that right?
It's not, it's, shall we say it's procedural. It's one of those.
I was under the impression that this was written.
Well, this is in manual. So it's a four-year manual.
Well, and it, and it hasn't always been thirty days. Like, if some people been cut off before thirty days have been up. So it was an informal procedure.
Couldn't we ask that the administration committee take a look?
We have.
A scan machine?
Well, basically, oh, yeah, it is part of.
It's for an organization that prides itself on protecting people's privacy. This seems to be an area that we're lacking.
Yes.
Well, what's.
I would also urge that the policy include that work email should not be for personal business. So it it should not be a privacy issue because you should not have your personal.
And there's also some internal work on changing email to begin with. The provider house addressed instead of by name is going to be much more by position. So it becomes an institutionalized email, not an organic email. So there is work being done on on that now on and in discussion also with Upper Hudson because they do have some ability to help us with some email things. So there might be a whole new process and procedure, but absolutely, this was already forwarded to admin. But right now, since we're working diligently of the Ken and Director Search, admin has taken a step back. I wasn't referring to the privacy of the individual on the email. I was referring to that person having access to library information when they may no longer be employed by the library. But I think that we had a very special case in this particular situation, kind of longevity in the office. And.
It's here before people have.
And so that's that is. So he does have an email now. And will be transferring things and has been. He said he could get everything done by then. So there's, there's going to be one of two things are going to happen in the next not quite twenty, just over twenty-four hours. So.
Can we back up a minute? Containment assessment.
We're ready to do that later because there's been some issues with our discussion of it. Okay. So we're headed towards the end and then it'll come back up. Are you trying to leave?
Even that is two hours ahead.
Well.
Let's move along.
Okay, so two other things. As Christine did put in, unless, does anyone else have any new or old business? Christine noted, again, the Director's Association's perspective on the addition of Schenectady Public Library to the Upper Hudson handler. So at last month's Upper Hudson Board meeting, and just to be really clear, the Directors Association is, well, it's under Upper Hudson and is a, you know, grouping of all the directors in the system. When it comes to the decisions, it has of that should be made at board level, it is only an advisor. It, we do have a member of the DA on the Upper Hudson Board. But again, and they can get a vote, but the DA has a group, certainly advisory capacity only. Um, so the Director of Upper Hudson did make the recommendation that Schenectady be allowed into the automation system, our automation system. And with the understanding that it would become a member. Members of the board had some very serious questions still that were not answered and had been answered to the satisfaction of the board members. Um, some of the board members actually signaled their vote, which was going to be no and talked about some of their board's feelings. Because two of our members will be particularly affected because geographically they are the closest to this connecting population.
How would they be affected?
Because people would be coming over, especially if there's problems over at Schenectady. They're concerned that more people will be coming to their libraries and having more um adding more stress to their own staffs.
Urban people might be going to suburban areas.
It's not just the urban part. It's that when you go to Schenectady, if you're urban, seriously, there are, there are problems over at Schenectady Public Library that may, there's a lot of transition. There's a lot of people leaving. On, yeah.
Administration.
Administration will now they have a new director. Uh, there is some.
How will that lead over into?
Well, if people are going to Schenectady, they're not getting the service that they require or want, they will go over. If you're urban or not urban. It's not that there shouldn't be allow. It's that these libraries are more concerned about the kind of effect it will have on their staffing. This is just what they're saying and talking about. I am the messenger of this case, okay? I cannot speak to their staff. Is there, very good. Okay. So I'm just trying to get people an idea of what's going on. So some of the member libraries are very concerned about this. And some of the member libraries are also very concerned about kind of what are we getting if we take them on and what it will cost in the long run. Some of us are very concerned about whether or not, since some of this is not as institutionalized in cost because as of the moment the van prices will go up, you know, deliveries will go up. And how will that affect the system, whether or not they're part of automation or a full member of Hudson? So there were more questions that needed to be addressed that could be at that meeting. It was tabled till our September meeting. And hope we'll have some more answers. I do know there is much talk in the news and in in private that will be, the Upper Hudson Board will be visited by people from Schenectady and including a great number of staff. We had a retired staff member come to us last month. We had two people from Mohawk Valley come to talk to us. And they were recognized by the board and asked questions about what was going on. There might, according to Mohawk Valley, they are trying to negotiate where it's connected. The Schenectady is rebuffing the attempts to talk. Um, this is going to be a seismic change in, in, in how we structure, how the state structures its systems that a library can say, I'm leaving the system that we are geographically assigned to and going to another system. And what happens to.
Welcome to your assignment. That's.
I mean, Schenectady seems like a pretty geographical.
It's a DLD thing. The DLD, you know, the state has set up that they are part of Mohawk Valley or they're part of Southern, they're on that.
I would say so.
It's, it's not as simple because then you have who is a central library. There are a lot of details to this and I don't want to bog down this meeting with it all. But there, one of these libraries, like Albany Public is our central library. They're the ones that get state money directed and they're supposed to spread it out. Schenectady has been their central library. Now what happens? What happens to the rest of the system?
Name a new central library.
Yes, but who's going to be able to do that? In Mohawk Valley, as a system even exists without this as a representative. These are the questions and DLD has not answered many of these questions. So one of the things we did ask from the administration of Upper Hudson is please go to DLD and try to get some of the answers, try to get them to actually make a decision on some of these things. So that's where things stand right now. And so in September, we go back and we discuss it again. It doesn't change what happened to Upper Hudson. It changes what happens to Schenectady and what happens to Mohawk Valley and Zales.
I can see how it could be an issue with voting and who's, right now, we've got, we've got a seat on, what, the day five?
We have a designated seat here.
With, with Schenectady be looking for a seat. Also, if Schenectady comes in, does all the funding follow them or does some of it get left on the table and now we're, now our taxpayers are supporting services for Schenectady?
Yeah, they're, they're about a, the central library and would they want to give that up and allow all the, you can use the central. No, it sounds like a turk.
It's not a turk for me. It's not even gotten that far. It hasn't gotten that far. And Albany Public's director was there that night to, she had to leave her, but she did not speak. But again, the idea is that Albany Public will rename Upper Hudson Central Library. Yeah. But, you know, there's, there's materials that were crossover and there's materials that Schenectady can't bring with them. They cannot bring the electronic material. So there's so many things that still have to be ironed out and board was not ready to go with something unless we saw an actual contract and defined decisions from an agreement with Upper Hudson and Schenectady.
Thank you for representing on that and dealing with that and figuring it all out.
My pleasure, thank you. Oh, I'll keep everybody informed, but right now, everything's still human though. So we just, so far, we do not have a new sibling. But the other thing is, is I know somewhat later now, the Nyla New York Library Association Conference, November sixth to ninth in Syracuse, the registration is open. And again, I had it been writing that we are considered trustees, that we are all trustees. So the negotiations with Nyla are successfully, successfully completed. So we should have no problem. If anyone wants to register, we can register for the discounted rates that trustees are guaranteed, unlike last year. Um, and I think that's it for my new business, new business. Do we have any other? Okay. Um. Any committee feedback?
Quiet, won't.
Quiet, it was some, but I'm going to skip whatever here till next month.
Interesting.
Now, because we have some issues with another item on our agenda, I'm going to go through this and then we, we're going to have a little discussion and bring something back. Do we have any public comments?
We do have one question regarding one of the things from the director's thing. The twenty twenty-four collection management statistics. What does, what does that actually represent? What are the numbers?
How do you mean, what do they represent?
Or is it adding things to the collection or removing things from the collection?
Oh, gotcha. Sorry. I think it's mostly adding stuff to the collection.
Okay.
Yes, this is just adding stuff to the collection and breaking it down between us and Lansingburg, or Maine and Lansingburg.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Anyone online? No public comment. All right. Um, now the date of our next meeting, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, five o'clock at finance. Wait, I don't know why this sounds so strange, but and then five thirty for the regular board meeting. Um. Which will then be followed by our meeting of candidates tonight and the budget presentation to the public at seven.
These candidates, which night? The tenth?
The tenth for the one at Maine. And then there's one the next week at Lansingburg.
Immediately after our meeting, so.
I have all of this information on a sheet so I can grab it and just email all of you so that you have it for you.
All right. All right. So now we have one more thing that we need to talk about, which is the containment assessment at Maine for the library, the trial room, et cetera. Now, it's come to our attention that this might be something that we need to do in executive session. Do you want to?
Yes.
Exploit this and that we can decide if we're going to have to go into executive session.
So what do you want me to explain?
The idea of why we're going to go into executive session.
Um.
Some people know why.
So I propose we go into executive session under New York State Open Meeting Law, Section One oh five, Part A. That's the reason.
But you need to specify what the reason is that.
Uh, discussing the contamination assessment at Maine Library and the nature of it.
But is it because of contract costs or it's a.
Risk to the public, which is specified in section, potential risks to the public, which is specified. It might be harm. It's the actual building.
So the motion is on the table. Do we have a second? Okay. Any quick discussion on whether or not we, about going into executive session? All in favor of going into the executive session discussion? Murray, is that a no?
Yes. I'm listening.
Okay. I'm saying to our guests, thank you so much for being here. I apologize that we have to do it this way. You have to be, so don't worry. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
We need to stop recording and stop broadcasting.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.